Good morning. I am the Chair of the United States Citizen Commission, Carlton W. Reeves, and I welcome you all to this hearing. I thank each of you for joining us, whether you are in this room with us or attending via live stream. I have the honor of opening this hearing with my fellow commissioners. To my left, we have Vice Chair Claire Murray. To her left, we have Vice Chair Laura Mate, and we have, whoa, and we have Scott Misler, the ex officio from the Department of Justice. To my right is Vice Chair Luis Felipe Restrepo and Commissioner Candace Wong. We are also joined by commission employees, of course, some of whom are in this room, but many of whom are not. They have done the research, they have drafted the policies, they have prepared us, they have set up this room, and they have done so much else, and they do so much else all the time. So on behalf of the commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, and the public, I want to thank each of our agency’s staff and employees for the amazing work that you do every single day. We are here today, ladies and gentlemen, because in April, the commission adopted a series of amendments to the sentencing guidelines that will change how sentences are applied in the future. Now, the commission is considering whether people sentenced in the past should benefit from some of the rules that will apply in the future. To help us make that decision about that choice, what we call retroactivity, we will be hearing today from panels that will provide us with a wide diversity of perspectives. Panelists, thank you all for being here. We’ve read your written submissions, and we appreciate those. Your time will begin when this light turns green. Some light around here will turn green. You’ll have one minute when the light turns yellow, and no time left, ladies and gentlemen, when it turns red. If I cut you off, please understand that I am not being rude. That’s the last thing that I ever want to be called, as we have so much to cover today, and our work will continue tomorrow and Friday. And so we have a limited time to hear from everyone. So for our audio system to work, however, you will need to speak closely into the microphones. Lean in. When all panelists have finished speaking, the commissioners may ask you questions. I’m certain they will do so. Thank you for joining us. I look forward to a very productive hearing. Our first panel will consist of Ms. Megan A. Healy. She is representing the executive branch’s perspective on retroactivity. For that perspective, we will have Ms. Healy, who is the appellate chief of the United States District Attorney’s, U.S. Attorney’s Office for the District of North Dakota. Ms. Healy, I’m sorry for botching up some of those things, but we are ready when you are there. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair Reeves and commissioners, for having me here today to discuss the Department of Justice’s perspective on the retroactive application of the physically restrained intervening arrest mitigating role cap and special instruction amendments. The commission has long recognized the presumption against retroactivity, and none of these amendments overcome that presumption. The department appreciates the considerations that motivated these amendments, but, as many commenters observed, these amendments do not reflect a fundamental revision of the guidelines or a significant reassessment of offender culpability. In our written comments, the department explained why public safety, finality of sentences, and the burden on courts and litigants counsels against retroactivity here. I’ll focus primarily on that last concern, the burden. The capacity of courts, probation officers, and litigants is not unlimited, and retroactivity decisions are not automatic; they require significant work by all parties. And experience has shown that applications are not limited only to eligible offenders. I personally have handled every retroactivity motion for Amendment 821 from my district. It has taken a significant amount of my time, particularly during the first half of 2024, and I am still responding to Amendment 821 motions. The burdens on the criminal justice system are particularly compelling here, where the practical challenges of assessing eligibility for a reduction under these amendments would involve complex eligibility determinations and may require new fact-finding. They would divert significant resources from pending cases and undermine the predictability of sentences. Turning to the physically restrained and intervening arrest amendments. First, these amendments resolve circuit splits and reflect the commission’s continual fine-tuning of the guidelines. As the CLC also recognized, the physically restrained amendment, combined with the corresponding changes to the otherwise used enhancements, does not cast doubt on whether using a firearm to convey a specific threat or to make physical contact with a victim merits enhanced punishment, but rather redistributes how the guidelines account for that use. Second, neither amendment would likely result in significantly reduced sentences for offenders. The physically restrained amendment may result in a two-level reduction for offenders in certain circuits, but courts may well exercise their discretion not to reduce the sentences of eligible offenders, as all of those crimes involved victims held at gunpoint. Third, these amendments turn on facts of specific scenarios, and retroactivity may require new fact-finding and impose significant burdens for what would ultimately be minor adjustments. Turning next to the mitigating role cap and the special instruction. First, these amendments are, in the commission’s own words, intended to address inconsistent application and to encourage broader use of the mitigating role adjustment in drug cases. As the CLC noted, these amendments are fine-tuning, not fundamental reformulations of the guidelines. Second, the commission’s data indicates that there is no way to estimate how many or by how much sentences could be reduced. The commission promulgated both amendments partly in response to data showing that judges were already imposing below guideline sentences in drug cases. Those same lower culpability factors giving rise to the amendment are already accounted for in those cases, and those below guideline sentences may preclude eligibility for many offenders, even if the amendments were made retroactive. Third, the burden of retroactively applying the special instruction and the resulting burden on the courts weigh against retroactivity. The new special instruction introduces novel, untested criteria that will be challenging to apply on a forward-looking basis. For example, the bounds of primary function will emerge from litigation, as will determining whether an offender’s conduct fell plainly among the lowest level of drug trafficking functions. That analysis becomes markedly more complex on a retroactive basis, where the special instruction contemplates reliance on factors that may well not be captured in the existing record. The near unanimity among stakeholders advising against retroactivity of the special instruction underscores how difficult retroactive application would be. For these reasons, the department respectfully opposes the retroactive application of each amendment. As always, the department appreciates the opportunity to provide our view, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Appreciate the time. I’ll try to move to my side.
Thanks for being here. So I’m curious as to the department’s perspective as the burden issue with the mitigated cap, which would impact maybe 650 people. Granted, others would file motions, but maybe 650 people would be eligible for a reduction. Is that an undue burden?
First of all, with respect to the mitigating role cap, I have two responses to your question. When we are applying retroactively, even seemingly mechanistic guidelines such as the mitigating role cap, unexpected legal twists arise, and it requires litigation to resolve them. So for example, and that increases the burden on the courts that’s unanticipated at this point. For example, when Amendment 782 was applied retroactively, litigation emerged to resolve the intersection of that amendment and the career offender and mandatory minimum guidelines. But second, even when eligibility is readily discernible, retroactive motions take time, and the diversion of resources from focusing on public safety concerns of today to really getting old cases has a real-world effect on the administration of justice. I think the commission’s data has shown that even if one thinks that perhaps 650 are eligible under the commission’s analysis, it’s likely that far more than that, who may be ineligible, will file motions based on what we’ve seen for the retroactive application of past amendments.
Understood, but again, just focus on the mitigated role cap. The analysis as to whether or not somebody is eligible is fairly straightforward. And has the department considered the impact on BOP in terms of relieving some of the pressure on BOP that is at overcapacity and understaffed and underfunded? And this would, you know, afford BOP an opportunity to send some folks home that are considered lower-level offenders. Does that factor into your analysis?
Concerns related to BOP were not a listed reason for the mitigating role cap amendment by the commission or to any of these amendments, and—
I understand that, but is that something that the department has considered?
The department has weighed the views of all the stakeholders within the department when reaching our decision to oppose retroactivity of all of these amendments.
V.C. Mate.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today and traveling during the summer. We really appreciate the extra effort. I wanted to, you didn’t mention this today in your remarks, but it was in the department’s written comment. That written comment points out that of the commission’s more than 800 amendments to the guidelines, only approximately 30 have been made retroactive. And I guess my question about this is when I’m looking and thinking about the commission’s past practice on retroactivity, it seems to me we should be looking at the past ameliorative amendments, not all of the amendments, but of the ameliorative ones which are eligible for consideration on retroactivity. You know, what has the commission done in that context? Are you aware, you know, of how many ameliorative amendments have been considered for retroactivity? You mentioned 30 were made retroactive, but what’s the denominator there?
I have not gone through to count and divide how many are, as you say, ameliorative or not, but if we look at the past dozen years or so, there have been just a few that the commission has identified as overcoming the presumption and reflecting a fundamental reformulation of the guidelines to be made retroactive. And by comparison, the amendments here that reflect fine-tuning, that reflects refinement of the guidelines, the mitigating role cap, in the commission’s words, was intended to refine the drug trafficking guideline. These amendments are different in kind from those that have been made retroactive in the past, such as the drug minus two or the crack cocaine amendments, or even status points amendments from a couple of years ago.
I did like a little back of the envelope, and I’m curious whether someone has a definitive number on that, but, you know, approximately 120. So, you know, we’re talking 30 out of 100, roughly 120 ameliorative, so about 1 in 4, which, you know, clearly goes beyond some of these, you know, there are certainly some that are these big fundamental, but there’s a range of other things that have been made retroactive. So 1 in 4, would that sound about right to you?
It may, but I wouldn’t necessarily, we wouldn’t qualify all of these amendments as falling under that cap. Some of them are, as I said, tweaking the guidelines based on what the commission is seeing through its research and refining the guidelines, not making a fundamental reformulation of how the guidelines operate or fundamental rethinking of how we all look at the guidelines. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? V.C. Mert?
Sure. Thanks so much for being here with us. The defender’s statement, which we’ll get a chance to address too, says on page six that there is a kind of history of the commission making retroactive amendments that alter 2D 1.1’s method of calculating base offense levels. I don’t know if you had a chance to look at that, but was that, did the department agree with that characterization? Do you guys have another view on that history?
We do have a differing view. We view the mitigating role cap and the special instruction amendments as about expanding the mitigating role adjustment in 3B 1.2 to how it’s employed in drug cases, not as a rethinking of how one calculates the base offense level under 2D 1.1. For example, this is similar to the commission’s past amendments in which the commission expanded access to safety valve, and obviously that had an effect on the offense levels calculated under 2D 1.1, but the commission did not make those amendments retroactive. I’m referring to Amendments 624 and 515. And second, even amendments that implemented the Fair Sentencing Act, the commission declined to make retroactive an additional reduction for minimal participants with certain additional criteria. So there is precedent for not making the mitigating role adjustment retroactive, even when it affects the calculation of the offense levels under 2D 1.1.
Ms. Healy, you mentioned the safety valve amendments just now as, in a similar vein, the department views them in a similar vein. What are some other amendments that were not made retroactive that you might consider very similar or analogous? What’s kind of a good reference point?
It’s a bit difficult to answer because so many of them are similar. I guess I would look to the commission’s amendment last year, putting in place a stipulation for how parties could stipulate to offense levels, which would relieve, in theory, defendants from minimum mandatories, and that wasn’t something that the commission decided to make retroactive. So that’s one that comes to mind, and that was more of a rethinking of how to reach a base offense level than these amendments are.
One of the commenters, I think it was PAG, that mentioned about the fundamental nature of the commission having found that there might be a need to do the mitigating role cap. I think it was PAG who says, you know, “past practices or past findings that are no longer useful, those persons who are serving sentences under that are, you know, serving sentences that we now believe might not be appropriate.” And I guess what might be the department’s response to that, and then I’ll have a follow-up question.
Just to clarify, Chair Reeves, are you thinking particularly of the special instruction or only the mitigating role cap or the combination of the two?
Combination and the mitigating role cap.
With respect to the special instruction, and on a going-forward basis, the special instruction and the mitigating role cap are linked together. The special instruction, the purpose of it is to provide a clear definition of minor participant or minimal participant in the context specifically of drug cases. The commission is telling courts, this is how we view this adjustment in drug cases. And the commission told us that the purpose of that amendment was to address inconsistent application and to encourage broader use of it on a going-forward basis. That’s not a fundamental rethinking of that someone with a mitigating role should receive a reduction, but more rethinking how we assess that reduction. Data does suggest that defendants in past cases have already received below guideline sentences based on their role in the offense. Judges have been well able to individually analyze each case and provide reductions for those who have a lower role in the offense, a mitigating role in the offense, and that is one thing that is already accounted for in those sentences. The special instruction, as I noted in my opening statements, is also challenging to apply on a going-forward basis, and it is heavily, and the amendment says it, is heavily dependent on the facts of the case. This is different than past retroactivity amendments such as status points or drug minus two, where you can look at the PSR and make the change, and complications may arise, but for most cases, you’ll be able to figure it out pretty quickly. That’s not this case. Here, we’ll have to reassess an offender’s function in the offense under new criteria. And third, the fact that the commission hasn’t been able to estimate the impact on offenders or on the burdens to the court system counsels against retroactivity of these amendments here. There’s a lot of unknowns attendant with these amendments, and that’s why the commission should caution against and decide against retroactivity without knowing how many offenders could benefit from this and by how much. I think the CLC noted that the pool of individuals who may seek relief is very large, and it would take the court system a lot of time to figure out who is eligible, who is not, given the uncertainty surrounding how these amendments will apply even on a going-forward basis.
And part of the numbers, and follow-up with Judge Restrepo, indicated, it was about the universe of cases is either between 650 and 1,000 and something, we believe, not to mention, anyone has a right to petition a court for relief, so we all get those cases all the time. But if it’s 650 cases, if that is the universe of cases, it’s 94 districts, so that would be less than seven cases per district, and obviously, many districts probably won’t even have any cases. Is that a fair statement?
I think the commission has narrowed down to 650, but I think it’s realistic that any one of the 3,600, 3,700 offenders who received a mitigating role adjustment would come back in to try to seek relief. And so I think it’s broader than, I think a realistic number is broader than the 650 that the commission has found might be eligible. But going back to why the commission should not make the mitigating role cap retroactive, for the reasons that I stated in response to Judge Restrepo’s comment, but also, the commission has recognized for a long time a presumption against retroactivity. The purpose of this amendment is to refine the drug trafficking guideline. This isn’t the same in kind as amendments the commission has made retroactive, such as the drugs minus two, which reflected a rethinking of how to calculate base offense levels across the board.
And with respect to retroactivity, if we were to vote to do it, would a reasonable delay of making it applicable, would that help BOP or the probation office or whomever it is that might need some space to implement it?
Yes, the department did ask that the commission provide a reasonable delay for the effectiveness of any retroactive guidelines. So yes, we would ask for a reasonable delay to afford time for us to put processes in place.
And finally, I realize that you mentioned the 821 cases, that you are solely responsible for handling in your district. That’s a matter of choosing how to allocate resources in the office, and I’ll just say, you know, one of the things that we are seeing as district judges all over the country is every 922 case, every 922G, A through whatever it is, or 1 through 82, or whatever it is, we’re now getting motions to dismiss indictments for all level of persons who are felons in possessions or persons who are not otherwise eligible to maintain firearms. And, you know, it was an open and shut case for us for years, but now we’re being inundated with all of these motions, and the court has to respond, so do the AUSAs have to respond. So it’s just a matter of allocating resources in many districts, right?
It is. I think this is a little different in that the challenges that you’re speaking of, Chair Reeves, have emerged around the country as defendants challenging on the front end their charges, and that’s something that’s going to happen in the nature of criminal litigation. This is different, and when we’re looking at applying and applying retroactively a change that we know is coming. So I think it’s a little bit different in kind, but you’re correct. Your premise is we’ve all had to allocate resources, and this is, having me do all of them is how my office chose to allocate our resources for efficiencies’ sake. But that, me taking all of them, does have a real-world effect on my colleagues in that I would otherwise have used some of that time to take appeals for them to lessen their load so they could focus on their district court cases. So it is correct, it’s an allocation of resources, but it does have a broader effect.
Thank you so much. Please, anyone else have any questions? From Ms. Healy. Thank you so much. I hope it’s cooler in North Dakota than it is here. Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Panel will provide us the perspectives from the federal public defender. To provide that perspective, we have Elizabeth Blackwood, who serves as National Sentencing Resource Counsel for the federal public and community defenders. Ms. Blackwood, we are ready when you are.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about retroactivity. Defenders support retroactivity for all four amendments. For 12 years, I worked as an Assistant Federal Public Defender in the Western District of North Carolina, primarily in our trial unit. During that time, the commission made two monumental amendments retroactive, Amendment 750 regarding the 100-to-1 crack powder disparity, and Amendment 782, or drugs minus two. For each of those amendments, I reviewed cases and filed motions with the court. I welcome the manageable but additional work since it provided much-needed hope and optimism for our clients, who were languishing in prison, serving sentences we all knew were too long. I also worked for four years at the National Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers as Director of the First Step Act Resource Center, where, among other responsibilities, I worked in tandem with the defenders to recruit and train pro bono attorneys to handle First Step Act crack retroactivity cases in the two districts without a federal defender office and reduction in sentence cases nationally. With the present amendments, defenders support retroactivity for all four, but I will focus my opening remarks on the two drug amendments, the mitigating role cap amendment and the 3B 1.2 expansion amendment. The principles underlying these changes represent the culmination of the commission’s extensive research and outreach and data collection around 2D 1.1. After this extensive work, the commission ultimately promulgated two role-related drug amendments. In enacting these amendments, the commission said explicitly that 2D 1.1 and 3B 1.2 do not adequately account for the lower culpability of individuals performing low-level functions in drug trafficking offenses. These reasons are striking because by its action, the commission is attempting to right two longstanding fundamental wrongs at once. The first wrong is that 2D 1.1 elevates drug type and quantity above actual culpability and role, resulting in sentences greater than necessary to accomplish the purposes of sentencing. For decades, commentators across the political spectrum have rightly criticized how 2D 1.1’s focus on drug weight and quantity has led to individuals involved in low-level trafficking being punished as if they were kingpins. And not only are they punished more harshly, but because their low-level positions make them easy to find and prosecute, they are the people most likely to be sentenced. The high number of these overly-long drug sentences have contributed to the explosion in the number of people incarcerated in federal prisons, while that same prison system continues to be in crisis. Retroactivity would take a significant step towards alleviating the damage caused by this unfair system by lowering overly punitive sentences in low-level drug cases and by reducing the prison population, which promotes the commission’s objective in 28 U.S.C. 994G to minimize the likelihood that the federal prison population will exceed the capacity of federal prisons. The second wrong that these amendments help ameliorate is the longstanding failure of courts to appropriately apply the mitigating role reduction under 3B 1.2 for individuals convicted of low-level drug trafficking. Despite the commission’s explicit past efforts to— Despite the Commission's explicit past efforts to encourage courts to apply this role reduction more robustly, data shows that courts have not done so. Retroactivity is a step towards rectifying the failure of sentencing courts to correctly interpret and apply the mitigating role reduction as the Commission intended. While certain stakeholders have argued that the purpose of these amendments is not significant, we strongly disagree. These amendments represent a paradigm shift in federal drug sentencing, requiring courts, some for the first time, to contend with an individual's actual role in the drug offense rather than relying on drug type and quantity as proxies for culpability. This is a targeted and profound structural change to how many courts sentence low-level functionaries and stands to substantially reduce sentences for those individuals in drug cases. Given the significant purpose of these amendments, as well as the Commission's past efforts to ameliorate the influence of large drug quantities on sentences for the least culpable individuals in drug cases, efforts that courts have failed to implement as the Commission intended, it makes sense for the Commission to vote for retroactivity for these drug amendments today. To briefly touch on the Commission's other criteria, the impact of both drug amendments also supports retroactivity. The mitigating role cap amendment impacts 650 individuals, and the amendment-expanding 3B 1.2 impacts thousands. The straightforward operation of applying the reduction in the mitigating role cap amendment weighs heavily in support of retroactivity. It would require no fact-finding and make it very easy to administer. The amendment-expanding 3B 1.2 is different, and we acknowledge that it would be more difficult, but it is entirely manageable given the institutional knowledge and retroactivity systems developed over the years. The purpose of the ameliorative drug amendments far outweighs the workload. And above all else, it is important to remember that the most significant reason for making these amendments retroactive is that they affect the lives of real people, our clients and their families and their communities. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share defenders' views with the Commission, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwood. Turn to my colleagues.
Thanks for being here. You mentioned that the mitigated role cap would require minimal, if any, fact-finding. Can you just walk me through that process, and can it be done on the papers without an evidentiary hearing?
Yes. The mitigating role cap amendment is going to be very easy to implement. It would really require two questions. We have to, I mean, we'll be getting the list of eligible people from the Commission, look through our own lists, some people may call, but all we have to do is look and see, did this person get a mitigating role cap reduction under 2D 1.1A5 at their initial sentencing, and does the new amendment apply? So that's usually someone who's a base offense level 30 or 32. And that's it. It's really going to be one of the, I think, simpler amendments that the Commission has had. It's really akin to Drugs Minus Two. So I think-
All that information is contained in the pre-sentence report?
Yes. If there is a reduction under 2D 1.1A5, it will be in the pre-sentence report. I haven't had many chances to have that reduction in the cases, and I've handled a lot of drug cases because I'm unfortunately in one of the districts where they didn't often apply the role reduction. But when I did get it, it would always be directly in the calculation for the guidelines. So we would see it. It's very easy to find a parent. It would be in every single case. So it's, the purpose of the mitigating role cap amendment, the impact and the administrability are always, they're very, they check all the boxes. I mean, it's really, the purpose is very significant. It's dealing with the unfairness of 2D 1.1. The impact is meaningful but manageable, and it will be extremely easy to implement. And as, I think you all touched on earlier, the maximum number of cases a district would have would be around 74, but most of them are going to have one or maybe no cases. So it's going to be, I mean, compared to what, we have dealt with such greater amendments, Drugs Minus Two and the crack motions for 750, so this will be much more easy to implement.
And if a judge, after he or she reviews this motion, determines that I already baked this into the equation at the original sentencing, the judge is under no obligation to grant any relief, is that correct?
That's correct. If the judge felt that the original sentence that he or she gave was the appropriate one, it is under no obligation. I will note that there is also post-sentencing conduct that the courts can take a look at, and so there might be other factors that the court would consider that might cause it to give, or make it weigh more heavily in favor of reduction, even if it did feel the role reduction was appropriate initially. But yes, it's up to the court to determine whether and by how much, under 3582(c)(2), to actually make the role reduction. That's the second part of this process.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. We appreciate your testimony. I'm going to switch gears a little bit to the physical restraint provision, and some commenters have raised concerns about additional fact-finding being necessary in the context of those retroactivity motions. But you, the defenders didn't seem as concerned about that, and I was curious as to why you're not concerned about any additional fact-finding there.
For the physical restraint reduction, we think that the factors that would be, the courts would need to look at for this reduction are going to be in, if not the pre-sentence report, then will be discussed at sentencing hearings, and it will be in the record. We don't think there'll be, I think it would be an aberration that this information would not be in there. And that is because, I mean, I've handled quite a few 2B 3.1 cases. We've talked to a number of defenders in other offices, and these are the factors that are always, always focused on heavily, whether or not there was a weapon, what happened with any victims in the case. It is, probation will always put it in the pre-sentence report. It'll be in the factual basis. It'll be in the statement of relevant conduct. And then it's usually argued at great length at sentencing hearings as well. I mean, it's something the government would argue extensively, and if we felt the facts were mitigating, we would certainly be arguing that as well in the sentencing hearings. So this is a situation where I just, it seems extraordinarily unlikely that this information would not be on the papers, in the record from the original sentencing hearing, because it just goes directly to the nature of the offense. So it's a quintessential 3553(a) argument.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Maitz.
Hi, thanks for being here. Just to follow up on that, on physical restraint, I wanted to ask you about what I think is footnote 71 of your submission then. So physical restraint, the interesting part about that, I think, is that we have potentially a minus two, but in some circuits at least, some of the same conduct may have gotten a plus five as brandishing, and now, I think, going forward, under the guidelines, we'd get a plus six as otherwise used. As I read your submission, you cast doubt on the notion that a court adjudicating a 3582(c) motion could consider the bump, the extra bump. And I wanted to just kind of flesh out with you, is that at the eligibility stage, I guess, would you acknowledge that a court could consider that interplay if it found eligibility, but then was trying to figure out at the second stage whether to exercise its discretion?
We think at the eligibility stage, there are ex post facto issues with considering the higher, you know, the six-level increase, but certainly something the court can consider under the 3553(a) analysis. I mean, we know, you know, under concepcion, the court can consider anything, and it certainly could consider that. So, you know, it could be a possibility that the court, you know, in these rare cases, these, you know, small percentage of these cases, that the court would only agree that a one-level reduction is appropriate. And two points, or a couple of points to that, you know, as I mentioned earlier, maybe the court only felt one level is appropriate for that reduction in that, you know, specific circumstance, but again, there's post-sentencing conduct, there are other factors the court may look at that may still cause it to give, you know, the full reduction based on the 3553(a) analysis. The second point is that a one-level reduction isn't, we've had that before. We've had that with the drug cases with 782, when the operation of career offender would only allow our clients to have one-level reductions. And those one-level reductions are significant, particularly under 2B 3.1, which can have such high offense levels with the application of a specific offense characteristics. So a one-level reduction can be a year or two of someone's life. So in those rare cases, if the court were only to give one-level reduction, we still think that would be significant, and we don't think that's any reason not to consider retroactivity because the majority of people would likely be eligible for the two-point to the two-level reductions, or at least a good percentage of them would be, and the court can always take into consideration other factors as well. Thanks.
You've referenced BOP in your testimony. So is the impact that a retroactive amendment would have on the BOP something we can or should consider, and if we can and should consider, what authority do we have to do so?
So absolutely, we think, under 994G, this is one of the, you know, policy principles, the mandates of Congress to the sentencing commission to consider overcapacity in federal prisons. And there's been this tremendous amount of reporting recently just about how dire the situation is in Bureau prisons right now with understaffing, individuals being placed in lockdowns for weeks at a time because there's not enough staff to take care of them. So we've discussed this at length in our comment, but it's a very difficult, you know, situation. So the Commission has a specific mandate from Congress to consider these issues with Bureau prisons when determining retroactivity, and retroactivity is particularly appropriate, I mean, to immediately deal with those issues. And the Commission specifically relied on this factor, overcapacity of prisons and 994G specifically, when it made Amendment 782, the Drugs Minus Two amendment, retroactive. That was one of the explicit reasons for retroactivity in that case. So we think that applies with all of these amendments as well, that this would be an extraordinarily appropriate basis for retroactivity for all of these amendments.
I have a couple of questions. With respect to the physical restraint, obviously, courts and circuits could reasonably disagree and have disagreed about how that ought to be construed, but I guess if there is a situation where persons in different geographic areas of the country have received disparate sentences, what is our obligation to make sure that there is no more disparity between sentences, or do we have an obligation to do that?
Yes. So preventing unwarranted disparities is another mandate from Congress to the sentencing commission. And when there are these circuit splits that are created, particularly very significant ones, like we've seen with physical restraint, the geographical disparity issue does come into play, and we do think the Commission is in the best position to resolve it. We know the Supreme Court doesn't typically take on these circuit split issues related to guidelines, so that is why it's really in the best interest for the Commission to resolve it and to apply retroactively, because it's so, it also gets to fairness issues because what could be more unfair than to be sentenced in the Western District of North Carolina to a much higher sentence than you would be getting in the Southern District of California? And then there's another issue that I think is kind of specific to this amendment, and that is that this, the circuit split, as I understand it, has been going on since the '90s. This has been a longstanding issue, and what we have is five circuits who read, you know, the amendment was unclear to such a degree that they all read it as the Commission has determined to be incorrectly. And as a result, for decades, individuals have been sentenced too high in those circuits. And so I think fairness would dictate, and it would be the appropriate thing to do for the Commission, to give those individuals who have been, you know, who've been sentenced incorrectly over the course of decades due to the lack of clarity in this amendment. So I think that goes to some fairness issues that are somewhat specific to this particular amendment, that it has such a deep and long circuit split, resulting in sentences that the Commission has now determined are too high.
Applying that geographic, sort of looking at things geographically, I don't know, I can't remember if your submission or others, do they show whether or not, and going back to the mitigating role, whether that has been applied, you know, we're talking about 650 cases now, maybe 1,036 or so. Are there circuits or districts, do we show a geographic distribution as to where that might have been applied more or less than other places?
So this is the mitigating role?
Yes.
So mitigating role cap, or are we talking about 3B 1.2 special instruction?
The mitigating role cap.
Yeah, I mean, I think to some degree, I mean, we have the breakdown of districts where we are seeing that they would be, you know, they would be getting this reduction. So I think, you know, those are districts where, I mean, I don't know, I don't think we have the breakdown of where, exactly where it's been applied and not, because we would have to look at the full number of cases. So that's a bit of a difficult question for me to answer. So I don't think I have the answer to that one, but I could follow up if I can figure it out.
No problem. Thank you. Yes.
I understand the letter to, that you submitted, to end with kind of a broader argument, anticipating, you say, anticipating arguments from some stakeholders to tread lightly to preserve the value of finality. So there's a section of the letter that addresses finality and says, as I understand it, essentially, Congress has recently enacted pieces of legislation that undid final sentences, and finality might not have the same purchase that it had in the past. How do defenders assess kind of the value of finality for victims? Some of these amendments do impact victims, obviously, and how do you assess that? And do you think that is an appropriate basis to differentiate kind of the value of finality?
I mean, it's, I guess the first point I would make is that with the drug amendments, we don't typically see a number of victims. I mean, I know occasionally it does come up, but I don't believe I've ever had victims in court through drug cases, and that's the more significant, you know, the numbers of people that would be impacted would be through those drug amendments. So I think where we would see it primarily would be with the physical restraint. And, you know, public safety, you know, issues regarding victims, that's something that certainly the Commission can consider, but also, I think, courts take into consideration very specifically. I mean, 1B 1.10 has courts deal with public safety. Victims are always notified before retroactivity motions, and so they're, you know, able to weigh in. But I think it's also important to note that victims aren't a monolith. They're not all the same. They're not always having the same views of what should happen in sentencing hearings. I think we can just look to the earlier hearings we had in this court, excuse me, in this Commission room on, earlier this year, where we had the president of FAM, who's, you know, been a victim but did not want retribution. She wanted fairness and justice. And we had the federal defender from the Eastern District of Michigan, who also did not want excessive punishment. So there's, you know, I just don't know if we can necessarily assume that all victims want the same thing, but to the extent that individual victims do want, you know, to speak about what has occurred, they are always informed during retroactivity motions, and I know the courts would always take into consideration their opinions as well. But maybe more to the point, I don't think that the victim issues are quite as significant with the drug amendments that we have here.
Any further questions from this witness? Ms. Blackwood, thank you so very much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Our third group of panelists will provide us with perspectives from our Commission's advisory groups. First, we will hear from Susan Walsh, the Second Circuit's representative of the Practitioners' Advisory Group, PAG, and a part of Vladeck, Raskin, and Clark PC. Second, we will hear from Ms. Laura Ruffa, the First Circuit Representative of the Probation Officers Advisory Group and a supervisory probation officer in the District of New Hampshire. Third, we will hear from Jamie Johnson, a member of our Tribal Issues Advisory Group, TIG, an enrolled member of the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma, and an Assistant Federal Public Defender for the District of Arizona. Finally, we'll hear from our friend Christopher Quasbar, who serves as the Chair of the Commissioners' Victims Advisory Group and as a Senior Staff Attorney for the Maryland Crime Victims Resource Center. Ms. Walsh, thank you. We're ready to hear from you whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much, Judge Reeves, members of the Commission. My pleasure to be here before you. On behalf of the Practitioners' Advisory Group, the PAG always welcomes the opportunity to provide testimony. And I would first like to address our position on the criteria for retroactivity. The PAG recommends that the Commission eliminate the current criteria set forth in the background commentary to 1B 1.10, and amend the Commission's rules of practice and procedure to make amendments presumptively retroactive instead of prospective. In the PAG's view, presumptive retroactivity gives weight to the very purpose of the guideline amendments, which is the application of more fair and just sentencing guidelines. It is this position that we find to be the most principled and coherent with respect to amending guidelines that the Commission has come to find may not have been properly applied or understood in, under current community norms. A prospective view results in sentencing disparities because the timing of sentences dictates the length of the sentence, and a uniform retroactive approach will more broadly apply reform that is meant to promote fairness and proportionality. The public comments submitted about retroactivity shows two areas of concern, with respect to broader retroactive application, administrative burdens, and diminishing the finality and predictability. We acknowledge at the PAG that these are appropriate concerns, but in our view, neither outweighs the promotion of fairness, the promotion of fairness that retroactive application would bring. Prospective application does not reduce the administrative burdens on any of the actors. As Your Honor has noted, as the public comments from the Department of Justice have noted, understandably, people apply when there are amendments, they apply for relief to the courts when there's an amendment to the sentencing guidelines, whether or not they meet the criteria or otherwise. There is an administrative cost when there are amendments to the guidelines, and the players and the stakeholders have met that, have risen to the occasion and met that burden. But by having a presumption of prospective application alone does not eliminate individuals who are incarcerated from seeking relief. And so the administrative burden will be there regardless, and the stakeholders have to rise to the occasion again. That's noted in footnote 11 to the Department of Justice's executive position is retroactive, retroactivity of Amendment 821, for example, more motions were denied than granted by a ratio of two to one, and upwards of 70% of the people that applied were denied for ineligibility. So the prospective or retroactive application does not deter those from seeking relief and does not, will not reduce the administrative burdens on the stakeholders. The analysis of the current amendment, for example, on the mitigating role cap that suggests that the 650 incarcerated individuals would be impacted for upwards, or on average of 12 months, is a prime example. This is significant jail time and a significant number of people, if you're in, particularly if you're within the 650. But the analysis does not evaluate how many ineligible folks will apply for relief. And therein is the administrative burden, and why, and why that should not outweigh the fundamental fairness of the amendments that the Commission has recognized need to be amended for ameliorated effect. Or that the promise of finality should not outweigh retroactive application because fairness and application of the law is in the balance. If an unfair metric was applied at the time of sentencing, at the time of sentencing, a guideline amendments exist to promote and correct the more fair sentencing structure. Finally, that retroactive application does not guarantee a reduction, as we know. Courts will still retain the power to determine whether a reduction is appropriate, and if the finality of the original sentence and other factors outweigh the purpose of the amendment in an individual case, the court, the court can decide not to apply the reduction. But presumptive retroactivity allows courts to engage in that analysis without the added administrative burden of determining whether or not the amendment is retroactive. If there is an administrative burden, or if finality is not always guaranteed, there are sacrifices, these are sacrifices worthy of the price for increased justice and fairness. The PAG supports, obviously, the retroactive application of these amendments, given our position on, on retroactivity in general. The Practitioners' Advisory Group's position is that the fairness and the application and the equality and the correction of pretend inequities in the past should not turn on the turn of the calendar page. And that's why we urge the Commission to consider the presumption of prospective versus retroactive application going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Ms. Ruffa?
Good morning. May I ask you to elaborate on the issue of retroactivity? POAG carefully considered the factors in 1B 1.10 when weighing in on retroactivity. I will begin by addressing the amendments that resolve circuit conflicts. POAG does not support a retroactive application of the amended physically restrained enhancement, an amendment intended to resolve a circuit split and promote consistency going forward rather than address a fundamental unfairness. The pool defendants who might benefit from retroactivity is relatively small, at just over 1,000. Hundreds of these defendants' reduction may be limited because of the interplay between physically restrained and otherwise used. POAG anticipates confusion over the interplay of these two provisions, and we may be in the unusual situation of removing one enhancement while adding another, a dynamic likely to raise legal challenges. This amendment may be difficult to apply retroactively, as there may be reports in which the circumstances surrounding the restraint are not sufficiently set forth to apply the clarified standard. This means additional fact finding, and the information needed may no longer be available, or it may require re-interviewing victims or having victims testify, disrupting any closure they may have attained. With respect to intervening arrest, POAG does not support a retroactive application of this amendment, which we view to be another amendment intended to resolve a circuit split rather than to address a fundamental unfairness. The Commission was unable to estimate how many defendants would be impacted by this amendment and to what extent defendants' criminal history scores would be impacted. The overwhelming majority of our defendants do have some criminal history, so the volume of motions filed could be overwhelming. Yet the impact of the amendment on those who are eligible for relief will likely be minimal, since offenses underlying traffic stops often receive zero to one criminal history point. POAG believes it will be difficult to determine if a defendant is impacted by this amendment without reviewing his or her entire criminal history. This will be cumbersome and time-consuming. It will present logistical challenges and possible disparity, as jurisdictions vary in their record retention practices. Some districts may need to request records again, and some agencies may no longer have these records. We may also have defendants whose criminal history category does not change, but whose criminal history points do. While 1B 1.10 would exclude these cases from consideration, there are districts in which defendants will file and the courts will hear motions to lower their criminal history points because of a potential impact on BOP classification. With respect to mitigating role, since the amendment at 2D 1.1A5 simply increases a pre-existing reduction, it should be the most straightforward and retroactive application. However, many members of POAG observe that courts already frequently vary when faced with 2D 1.1 base offense levels they view to be too high, especially for defendants they believe have not, have not received an adequate reduction for their role. This makes a technically straightforward amendment difficult to implement retroactively, as it will likely be difficult to figure out whether and to what extent the court's sentence already reflected this. The Commission has estimated that approximately 650 defendants may be eligible for this reduction. That is a very small percentage of those who receive mitigating role, who are in turn a small percentage of those sentenced under 2D 1.1. POAG's experience with prior retroactivity events suggests far more defendants will file for relief than are eligible for it, including many who are clearly ineligible. POAG is concerned about the volume of petitions that will be filed. Furthermore, while POAG appreciates that any amount of time in prison is significant to those serving it, the vast majority of persons eligible for a reduction of sentence will be looking at one to two levels rather than three or more. POAG is concerned that the expansion of mitigating role through the function test will complicate things further. It will open the floodgates to defendants who did not initially receive a role adjustment, whether or not the function test amendment is made retroactive as well. With respect to that amendment, as to function, the number of defendants who could be impacted by retroactivity is difficult to ascertain. What we do know is that 94% of the almost 60,000 defendants incarcerated for a drug trafficking offense did not get a mitigating role adjustment, meaning the pool of defendants for whom analysis may be needed could be enormous. This amendment will be complicated to apply retroactively, as a defendant's role will need to be reevaluated through an entirely new lens. There will be situations in which factors relevant to this analysis will not have been vetted fully, resulting in additional fact finding. Also, because this is a new concept, the reduction will likely result in litigation over what circumstances fit the new standard. For instance, what are user-level quantities? What if the person sending and receiving messages is a dispatcher for an entire network of couriers? What is a courier? And what if we previously used that term too casually because it did not carry so much weight? Some members of POAG noted that the courts have long recognized that mitigating role does not capture as many defendants as it should, and have frequently varied to account for some of the factors that will now be considered. It will be difficult, however, to determine whether and to what extent this may have been done. Post Booker, judges have had the freedom to consider factors the guidelines did not account for or did not account for to the degree they thought was appropriate. Those include factors that we are discussing today. POAG appreciates the Commission is always looking to refine and improve the guidelines through amendments. However, we strongly urge the Commission to refrain from rendering these amendments retroactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffa. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Reeves and members of the Commission. Thank you for inviting me today to speak on behalf of the Tribal Issues Advisory Group. TIG is, as we noted in our letter, pleased to support the retroactive application of the mitigating role cap, which we view as a matter of fundamental fairness, and is consistent with TIG's position that drug sentences in general, or the drug guidelines in general, have gotten misaligned with the expressed through the data views of the judges who are sentencing in these cases. And so we view this as rectifying a fundamental unfairness, unfairness for those defendants who might have been sentenced by a judge who, whatever their opinions about the guidelines, might have chosen to take a more deferential view to the guidelines, and who, were the guidelines to be amended, would be happy to sentence the defendant to a, a lower sentence. TIG used this sentence as this, the retroactive application of this portion of the drug amendment as very administrable, like our witness earlier today. I also, I handled all of the Amendment 821 reductions in the entire District of Arizona. I did it while carrying a full caseload. It, the criminal history amendments, like this amendment, were very easy to determine eligibility based on the face of the documents from the pre-sentence report and the statement of reasons. And this potential application would be even more administrable in that with respect to Amendment 821, it was necessary in every case to obtain the PSR and the statement of reasons, because it was impossible to tell what someone's criminal history was without those documents. In this case, because, you know, we've heard from other stakeholders that there are concerns about people who will file who are not eligible, and the burden that places on the court system, in this case, many of the people who file and are not eligible, their lack of eligibility will be obvious without even needing to obtain the pre-sentence report. For example, if somebody who was convicted of illegal reentry or bank robbery applies for retroactive application of the drug amendment, it won't even be necessary to obtain the PSR to determine that this person is not eligible. Even, even in cases where it is necessary to obtain the PSR, I would say that this probably took an hour combined of everyone's time, would be my best estimate, having spoken to all of the individuals involved in this project in my district. So it is a more limited number of people, 650, but it's very meaningful to those individuals. And the magnitude of the offenses reflected in the, or magnitude of the change as reflected in the data report appears to be significant, and this was what ultimately motivated TIG to support this amendment. I also wanted to speak a little bit about the physical restraint enhancement. TIG also supports the retroactive application of this amendment. The last time I was here, there was a question about how often this arises in Indian country. So I did a little bit of research into the data, and from my experience, we do see robbery cases, and we see robbery cases with 924C in Indian country. But I looked at the data from the eastern and northern districts of Oklahoma, which were the two districts impacted by the McGirt decision in 2020. And in the year 2018 and 2019, in each of those years, there were two cases opened, two robbery cases opened combined in those districts in each of those years. And in 2021, which was the first year that McGirt was fully implemented, there were 23 robbery cases combined in the eastern and northern district of Oklahoma. 23 is not the normal number. A lot of that was McGirt backlog, but I think that it stands to reason that most of that were, was individuals who were sentenced for robbery offenses or charged with robbery offenses in the state who were Indian and charged in a federal court after the McGirt decision. So this is an issue that impacts Indian country. It is also an issue that splits Indian country. Prior to this amendment, the Tenth Circuit, which has the eastern district of Oklahoma and New Mexico, Colorado, and Utah, has substantial Indian country in those states or districts, had one rule. And then the Ninth Circuit, which Arizona, Montana, Washington, Nevada, had a different rule. And so whether or not you received this enhancement could depend on which reservation you were located on, or in the case of the Navajo Reservation, which part of the reservation you live on. Because most of the Navajo Reservation is in Arizona, but portions of it are in New Mexico. And so two individuals on the reservation, same reservation, same tribe, would have been subject to different rules just depending on where they happened to be on the reservation at the time that the offense was committed. And so this is, I think for this reason, TIG would support the retroactive application of the, the physical, the physically restrained amendment as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Quasbar?
Thank you, Chair Reeves, Vice Chairs, Commissioners. The Victims Advisory Group thanks you for this opportunity to address retroactivity of these recent amendments pursuant to Section 1B 1.10. We ask you to follow your practice and procedure rule 4.1A, providing generally prospective-only application, and decline retroactive application to the physical restraint and the two drug amendments. Charlene was a bank teller. She loved her job. She loved her coworkers, loved interactions with customers and the community of service she provided. All of that changed when Charlene was robbed at her bank teller window by a man with a gun who told her not to move and to give him the money. Afraid for her life, Charlene gave the robber her money from her drawer. Afterwards, Charlene was afraid to go to work. She was afraid that the robber would find out where She was afraid that the robber would find out where she lived and would harm her. Charlene was frightened to meet with the prosecutor and I because she did not want to relive that experience. She did not want to testify because the robber would know who she is. After a plea conviction, she did not give a victim impact statement in person because the robber would see her. Post-conviction proceedings brought her further trauma and panic that the process again would bring focus on her to the robber. Robbery is a violent offense. Firearms greatly increase the risk of the severity of that violence, and victims do not brush off the immediate danger of a firearm's offense. Many thought that they would be shot and killed at that time. That memory does not fade. Victims Advisory Group strongly recommends that you decline retroactive application to the physically restrained enhancement. There are crime victims violently robbed at gunpoint in each of the 1,063 cases that the Commission's analysis estimates may be affected. And there may be more victims than that. We just, we don't know. There could be multiple victims in each case. That analysis offers no data on the impact of retroactive application on these victims. Retroactive reduction of offender sentences initiates victim trauma, raises safety risks, and crushes the victim's sense of finality in the criminal justice system. This amendment's purpose is clarification, resolving a reasonable interpretation difference between a balanced split of circuits on the term physically restrained for purposes of one section and amending another section to clarify application of the sixth level otherwise used enhancement. As a clarification, the amendment's purpose does not compel retroactive application under Section 1B 1.10. Judicial Conferences Committee on Criminal Law public comment agrees. We also agree with that committee that the magnitude of the change, the difficulty in retroactive application, and the impact on public safety by releasing violent offenders do not warrant retroactive application. The DOJ and the POAG, both in their public comment and their testimony here today, likewise oppose that retroactive application. Please do not further traumatize victims with a retroactive application of that amendment. We also recommend that you decline retroactive application to both Subparts I and II of Part A of the drug offenses. The Commission's analysis offers no data on the number of crime victims or the type of victimization for either Subpart I and Subpart II. And we realize some drug offenses won't have victims, but we don't have any data at all because oftentimes drug offenses are prosecuted because someone dies and there are those types of offenses. Subpart II analysis cannot estimate how many of the 62,045 persons currently incarcerated may qualify, the magnitude of the change, or the application difficulty. Without this critical information, which is part of the factors that you all consider, the Victims Advisory Group cannot recommend a retroactive application. Again, the Committee on Criminal Law, the Department of Justice, and POAG all agree that these amendments do not meet that criteria. Since these amendments don't meet the Section 1B 1.10 criteria and that retroactive application will significantly lessen public safety and further harm victims, we ask you to follow your rules or your practice and procedure rule 4.1A and only look at amendments for prospective-only application and deny retroactive application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quasbar. Any questions of these witnesses? V.C. Restrepo, you're going to start it up.
Ms. Johnson, thanks for being here. You talked about the protocol or procedure your district had when you were in charge of 821 amendments. Could you tell us how, what impact that would have if we did make the mitigated cap role retroactive? I mean, how did you folks structure it to minimize its impact on the various stakeholders?
Sure. So we, after the, after the Commission voted to make the amendment retroactive, we had a meeting with the relevant stakeholders, which included a representative from the Federal Public Defender's Office, a representative from the United States Attorney's Office, a representative from the probation office, and a representative from the clerk's office. And we got together and we thought, what's the, how can we minimize the amount of work necessary for everyone? And so we decided our particular protocol was that this would be handled by, at the U.S. Attorney's Office, there was one person in Tucson and one person in Phoenix. At the Federal Public Defender's Office, it was me for the entire state. That we would get together, I would send a list, I would do the first cut of the evaluations and see who I believed was eligible based on the list that was sent from the Sentencing Commission. And I sent them all over to the U.S. Attorney's Office. They went through, they took a cut at them, they sent me back a list of who they agreed with, who they didn't agree with, and where the parties agreed, our court, and this was also memorialized in a, in one of the general orders of the court. Where they agreed, the probation office was actually not required to respond unless ordered by the court. So we would put forth our case for eligibility directly to the court, and the probation office was relieved of the obligation other than to just provide us with the documents that were necessary. Where we disagreed, the probation office would weigh in. And then for individuals who applied pro se, I would take them, I would review all of them. If the person, if we found at the Federal Public Defender's Office that the person was, that the person's motion would benefit from supplementation by the Federal Public Defender's Office, we did that. If we reviewed the pro se motion and we found that there was nothing to say that would be helpful or advance that person's case, we filed a notice saying that we were not going to supplement. And at that point, the U.S. Attorney's Office didn't have to respond unless ordered by the court. So the U.S. Attorney's Office did not have to respond in our district to any motions filed by people who were not eligible unless ordered to do so by the court. And then the probation office would come in and file a, generally a half a page or a one-page memorandum explaining generally why the probation office believed this person was not eligible. And it worked very well. You know, we did, I think about 200 eligible motions, several hundred people who filed pro se who were ultimately, who had their motions denied, and I probably fielded, I don't know, 300 calls and letters from people who were inquiring about their eligibility. But it is, you know, you get in a routine, it gets to be, these cases are very similar, they don't require a lot of fact finding, and they can be gone through very quickly. So that was the system that we set up in my district. It worked very well.
So do you think this, the 821 amendments would be more or less cumbersome than the mitigated role cap?
I think the 821 amendments were more difficult because every single person who filed was at least potentially eligible. Because either they had no criminal history or they had some criminal history, you had to get the PSR, you had to find what their criminal history was in the PSR. This would only apply to drug defendants. The eligibility or lack of eligibility would be very obvious, it would be one paragraph you'd be looking for in the PSR. The other thing about the 821 amendments is there was, for the people who had zero criminal history points, there was also a list of exclusionary criteria, and you had to go and look at the, whether any of the exclusionary criteria applied. And so it was more complicated than this would be. This would probably be, you know, if you had a stack of PSRs, you could probably go through all of them in an afternoon and figure out who was eligible. It's, you know, I understand probably with some of the earlier amendments, when people were figuring out the best systems to use, it may have been a little bit more difficult, but we really got it streamlined in my district and we went through these and there was no, there were no problems.
V.C. Mait.
Thank you all for joining us today. We really appreciate your testimony. Ms. Johnson, I have a follow-up on sort of an administrability concept. And this is about the mitigating role special instruction. So one comment letter by an organization that's not, not here today, so you get to feel this question, suggested that if we were concerned about the administrability of the retroactive application of the special instruction, which I understand TIG is, we could limit retroactivity to only people who would be eligible for the four-level reduction. That is, the people at the lowest level of the drug trafficking function, like couriers. Because this would be, this would narrow the fact finding that would have to happen to just identifying the person's role, which would likely be evident from the PSR, maybe? I'll turn that over to you, I guess. And avoid some of the other inquiries present in the rest of the special instruction, like motivation for the offense or the extent of compensation. I'm curious about your thoughts on that kind of partial approach to the mitigating role special instruction.
Well, so TIG didn't discuss potentially narrowing, narrowing our instructions. So I don't know that I'm authorized to speak for all of TIG. I will say that based on our discussions and our general belief that the drug guidelines have been out of, out of line with the conduct, that if the amendment could be changed in a way that made it more administrable, that did not require individual fact finding, didn't require hearings, didn't require resorting to discovery documents, that that would be in line with views that, what you've said would be in line with views that TIG has expressed in the past about drug guidelines and the ways they need to be ameliorated.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. This is a question, I think, primarily probably for the two witnesses who supported retroactivity for the physically restrained amendment, but happy to hear from anyone who has thoughts. I wonder if you'd mind weighing in on the ex post facto discussion that Commissioner Meisler had with Ms. Blackwood. To me, it seems like the physically restrained amendment is a coherent whole composed of two parts. And if you are able to sort of like apply one half retroactively but not the other half, you don't get the desired effect of sort of straightening, making straight something that was curly. So thoughts from any of you on whether or not we would be able to make the whole amendment retroactive or only, only the physically restrained part and not the otherwise used part? Thanks.
Well, speaking as best I can on behalf of the PAG, I think, you know, we support retroactivity as a whole in the application. And I do, I agree with my colleague that an enhancement or a bump up on a retroactive amendment to the, to a higher guideline level will most definitely impact ex post facto constitutionality of it. I also do think, as a real-world practitioner, that these are fundamentally addressed in a 3553A analysis regardless. Of course, there has to be a guidelines analysis initially, but issues as to how physically restrained, if physically restrained, are baked in to the analysis regardless. So I think parsing too closely is potentially not productive. There are always going to be fact patterns that are outliers. We're looking to ameliorate substantial inequities, which I understand are sometimes five to eight levels, the difference between those two. I think that's where the focus of the amendment should be. And, you know, if I may, in addition to addressing this in particular, there's a point that I think that hasn't been made, both with respect to the capacity of the Bureau of Prisons, with respect to finality issues, and with respect to fairness issues, fundamental fairness issues, is that as a practitioner and personally and as a member of the PAG, the potential for a retroactive amendment is a great incentive for people that are incarcerated to reform, to be on good behavior, to partake in rehabilitative measures that they may not otherwise if finality was the overriding issue and if there was no hope. So it's, it's an unquantifiable factor. I don't know that there is data that will ever be available to support that concept. But I urge the Commission to consider that factor because it is a substantial one. And to the extent that individual practitioner's experience is relevant, we see that quite frequently now, when there was clemency petitions in the early 2000s, now with retroactive amendments. That is in the minds eye of people that are locked up, that if I'm on good behavior and if I take advantage of programs, there is hope down the road. So I hope that you'll factor that in when weighing the retroactivity of even a violent offense such as robbery. Thank you.
I would say I agree with Ms. Blackwood that there would be ex post facto considerations in applying a half of, half of the amendment. That said, I also agree that it can be considered in the 3553A analysis, and I think that it very likely would be. What we have, what we have seen previously is that when we had the drug minus-two amendment and the crack amendment, that virtually all of those motions for sentence reduction were granted, they were typically nonviolent offenses. Amendment 821 was a little bit different, and we did have, particularly in Arizona, which has a lot of violent crime because of the reservations. We had cases with pretty egregious facts, and we did have, you know, I'd say a majority of the motions were granted, but, but we did have motions denied on 3553A grounds. And I think that if there was a physical restraint enhancement applied where a person was not actually restrained, but there were other particularly aggravating factors, that that would be something that the court could and would very likely take into consideration. And in our experience, those facts would be in the PSR, they would be very easy to identify.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
I'm not really sure, just, can we spell that out, what that means if there would be ex post facto concerns raised as to, hey, the guidelines now say that court, you gave a five-level enhancement for this conduct, but actually it should get six? That that wouldn't be, there would be ex post facto concerns raised with that argument, but it would still filter it in the 3553A? Can we spell that out? What would it look like in 3553A then? The facts are still the facts, but could the court then say, "Commission, under 3553A, I'm going to consider that the Commission has now made that six levels where I made that five"? Or would there still be an objection by the defense, "Hey, you're raising, you're making an argument that should warrant ex post facto concerns"? Because of course, the conduct will still be considered at 3553A, but the court already did consider that at sentencing. And so, yes, maybe that's an aggravating fact, but that was an aggravating fact that was given a five-point enhancement previously. Can the court now say, "Given the Commission's actions, under 3553A, I'm going to now make that what I viewed as aggravating even more aggravating, give it six"? Or something that's akin to six-point enhancement?
I, I think that ex post facto considerations would come into play if, if the district court attempted to recalculate the guidelines. And, you know, the resentencing forms that these, the district courts are encouraged but not required to use, ask for a new guidelines calculation. And so I think there would be an ex post facto consideration if the new guidelines calculation considered a guideline that had been subsequently increased. That's what I mean about ex post facto considerations. If the new, you know, when you fill out the form and it says offense level, criminal history category, if the new offense level reflected a change that had been made to increase a guideline. That said, I think that when talking about, if that was the only justification that was given, which is not anything that I have personally seen, that might be an ex post facto consideration. Generally, what I have seen is this conduct was very serious, the guidelines were insufficient to account for the seriousness of this offense. That is perhaps reflected in the views of the Sentencing Commission in changing this guideline. So in my opinion, in the 3553A factors, this sentence was, was fair at the time that it was given. As a practical matter, as I'm sure you are aware, very little explanation is required and in our experience, very little is given, which is, which is fair and reasonable given the time constraints, that a sentence, what we get most of the time when these motions are denied, or one sentence saying, "I've considered the 3553A factors and I find this person," does not warrant a sentence reduction. I agree that they are facially eligible and that the facts of this case do not warrant a sentence reduction, and the Supreme Court has held that that explanation is sufficient and justified. So I don't know how often this would in fact be litigated, but that's what I mean with the 3553A factors. I think that they, the court certainly can consider that the conduct was, that they felt that the old guidelines sufficiently captured the seriousness of the conduct and that they don't want to give the person a sentencing reduction now.
Ms. Rovell, I have a question for you, and I think I might have one for you, Ms. Walsh. But I believe in your submission, Ms. Rovell. But I believe in your submission, Ms. Ruffo, that you indicated that in comparing all the retroactive amendments that we put forward, that the mitigating role cap amendment is the most straightforward one to apply. I believe that was in the comment of POAG. Why do you say it's the most straightforward one to apply?
I think our submission said, you know, technically the most straightforward because it's a mathematical calculation. However, as I think I mentioned in my testimony, we do think it's going to be complicated for two reasons. One is many of us are seeing the courts already vary downward in a lot of these cases. And so to try to parse out what happened at sentencing, you know, when you have competing variance factors, or not competing, but multiple, when you have someone who's a substance user and distributing for that reason, when you have a very high base offense level, the court is varying based on a number of factors, which it should. And so when we're doing a retroactivity analysis, it's very difficult to kind of hone in on whether the base offense level and how high it is has already been considered and factored into the sentence. I think the second complication is going to be that the commission has expanded role through the function test. And, you know, maybe I'm speaking for myself here. I think I can represent POAG where I say that we've seen it over and over again, that defendants are going to file motions that, who are not eligible based on factors that weren't made retroactive. So, and I don't blame them. I think many defendants are going to file motions because they would now qualify under the function test. And even if the function, special instruction, isn't made retroactive, if we have another retroactive amendment that deals with role, I guarantee you, we're going to have a lot of filings by people who now view themselves as eligible. So that's going to complicate things as well and increase the number of filings that we receive.
But nothing stops anybody from filing. And all, I mean, in all of our districts, we see ineligible people file all the time, even if we don't make these retroactive. I guarantee you, in some districts, in some places, you're going to see a spike in the number of people requesting relief based on the fact that the commission considered making it retroactive, right?
That's true, but I also think that there are a lot of districts in which, you know, the court's going to want to hear from these defendants and actually consider these motions, which then requires the probation office to look at function retroactively. I'm, you know, maybe I'm speaking from my circuit, but I'm pretty sure in my circuit that that may happen because I think we're already looking at those factors at sentencing. And so I think regardless of whether someone's eligible or not, I do think we're going to have to do that analysis to some extent.
Well, are there any documents that would be accessible to the probation officers and others in seeing what the district court might have done previously, like the statement of reasons form, like a transcript of the sentencing hearing?
Sure. I think it will help us know if the court considered someone's role or someone's function, but I don't know that we'll be able to parse out to what extent that was part of the reason because, like I said, I think we're, I think our judges are really thoughtful and, you know, they're thinking of so many factors when they're imposing sentence, and we know variance rates are high. And so I think to try to hone in on what proportion of that variance was due to that is going to be really hard because a statement of reasons doesn't say, "Well, how much of this variance is because of, you know, this person's role, this person's function?" And so, you know, while I love being in a world where we can grant variances, because I think there are many situations in which it's called for, it does make retroactivity exceedingly hard, not as hard as it was back in the day when I first started this job and variances were not quite as common. I think it's really hard to look back and figure out what happened at sentencing.
And then your only, the final question, I know I only said I have.
You said you were going to go easy on me, too.
I did say that yesterday, didn't I? No, no. The, you've worked in at least a couple of different districts, and of course, each of those districts have had to deal with the retroactivity for the prior amendments, either H21 or crack cocaine, whatever it was. How did, did you see any difference? Have you experienced any differences in the way that might be what you've done in one office that might have been better than the other office? I'm just...
Sure. I happen to have worked in districts that I think are fairly similar. I think in discussions with other POAG members, I think we all try to start with a list the commission has provided. We try to work with the court, the clerk's office, the parties, and come up with a plan. I think that plan is only as good as what we can plan for. And so I don't think we can ever predict the volume of filings we get. And, you know, to give status points, and zero-point offender, as an example, in my district, which is very small, I want to say we got as many filings from defendants who were ineligible and not on the list as we did who were on the list. And so while we can have a plan to deal with the filings we know we're going to get or that people who we believe will be eligible, it's a whole different ballgame to have to address filings we don't anticipate, or filings we anticipate but we don't know who's going to be filing. I don't know if that answered your question.
It did. Ms. Walsh, you indicated that you, well, some others, I think, have indicated when you make these adjustments on, I think it was the mitigating role, might be the difference between one offense level, which might be six months in prison, or up to maybe, at most, some people might get a year off, you know, with the reduction. And I know you've represented people who, you represent people who have been sentenced to long terms and short terms in prison. I, you know, I just want to ask you, in talking with your clients, what is that difference between serving another day or another six months or another year in BOP? For that time, what is that for them?
The difference can be between being able to say goodbye to a loved one, being able to welcome a baby into the world, being able to qualify for a new job, being able to make a degree, being able to be diagnosed with a terminal illness. It can be life-altering, or just as simple and as pure as being reunited with supportive and loving, waiting family members. So in my experience, no day is insignificant, and it's very challenging to parse six months from eight months, six weeks from two weeks. Every single day where somebody's liberty is at stake, the consequences are exponential, not only for the individual that's incapacitated, but for all of the people to whom he or she matters in the world. So I think that that is why we see understandably people making application, whether or not they're within the retroactivity criteria or otherwise. One other point, if I may add to...
You may.
It's in terms of administrability and the volume. We see some judges adjourn until after November if there's been an amendment that may not be made retroactive. We see some judges refuse to do that, the sentencing, adjourn the sentencing to do that, but take it into consideration under other factors. We see ineffective assistance of counsel, habeas petitions, because the lawyer didn't argue for an adjournment after the amendments become effective. So we're putting fingers in the dam if we're basing all of our considerations here on volume and administrability because people that are looking for relief and seeking relief from the courts and that are seeking justice and fairness, because when a cellmate comes with substantially similar crime that was sentenced after me and leaves before me, we have a fundamental fairness problem in our system. And so understandably, people are applying whether or not they fit exactly what we could foresee when we made the amendments. And of course, all stakeholders recognize how carefully the commission considers all of the factors before they make an amendment. And for those reasons, folks hang on the opportunity for either a six-month relief, a 24-hour relief, or a 10-year relief, depending on the scale of the amendment and its retroactive application.
And to follow one other question, because this stood out in your submission to me, and I think you started with it. Your PAG's argument is that each amendment that applies or that is adopted, there should be a presumption of retroactivity. So I want you to elaborate on that.
Because of how carefully we know that the commission considers before it makes an amendment, and because we know of how much that goes into the consideration, the factors, and because we know that the fundamental mission is fairness and to correct disparities in how the guidelines are applied across the country, we think that the presumption of retroactivity to correct injustices is where the emphasis should be. And it should, we shouldn't leave those people behind when we, as a community, as a commission, as a country, have decided that there are gaps in how the administration of justice is being applied across the country, and there's room for correction. And we should bring those people with us by making the presumption retroactive rather than prospective.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yes, yes.
Ms. Ruffo, and I want to cabin this question strictly to the mitigation, the cap, right? And in light of my conversation with Ms. Johnson, is it POAG's position that if the only amendment we're considering is the cap, that the administrative cost or the administrability is untenable, is not doable? It's burdensome?
I would never say undoable because we've always...
Is it excessively burdensome?
I think it will be. I think that we will get filings by people who deem themselves to be eligible, in part because of the evolution of role through these amendments. And I do think we're going to have to analyze that. I think, again, the bigger issue is going to be figuring out whether the court already considered how high those base offense levels were.
That's a decision for the court, right? Let's assume, yeah, that's a decision for the court, and only the court can make that determination as to what he or she factored into the equation at sentencing. So if somebody deemed eligible for an audience in front of the court, it doesn't mean they're going to have a reduction in their sentence. But that question of what was baked into the equation at sentencing, only the court can answer that question.
True, true. I do think that in many of these, in many of our districts, we are asked to, well, we may be asked to weigh in on that.
Of course. That's what courts do. They rely on probation officers for their opinions, but only the court can answer the question as to what was baked into the equation at sentencing.
Correct. But I think also for us, when, if we're talking about, you know, whether it's burdensome, what strain it might put on the system, is just having the resources to deal with the filings that come in.
I get it.
And deal with the, you know, processing. You know, we sometimes forget about the people who are most valuable in our offices is the administrative support, who are often the people who are, you know, forwarding documents to the Bureau of Prisons, trying to, you know, get these motions squared away. I think there's still a lot that goes on behind the scenes for any filing that we receive. So that's where, when we talk about the filings that come in and the resources that will be used on those, I think we still have them even if ultimately someone's not eligible.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
I think this is from Ms. Johnson, but I'm welcome to hear anyone's perspective on it, but I'm curious, because it seems to me from the people we've heard today, almost all the stakeholders have viewed the two drug amendments as kind of hand-in-hand, right? They go together, they refer to each other. But I think TYAG is maybe the only stakeholder here today who separated them out, right? Who said, "Yes, you should make the mitigating role cap alone," but everyone else has been, they stand and fall together, right? I'm just curious if you can speak to that, because I will say I found it interesting from Ms. Ruffo's testimony, how POAG may anticipate that even trying to decouple them, you really couldn't do that in practice because you're going to have folks who either didn't get a mitigating role adjustment the first time or got less than they think they should get filing, seeking the reduction there, even if the commission made only the cap reduction and not the special instruction retroactive.
Sure. So as we said in our letter, it really came down to administrability. I don't share respectfully, I'm sorry, I don't share Ms. Ruffo's concerns. Eligible people will file, as Chair Reeves keeps pointing out. You can't keep people from filing. And absolutely, there will be people who said, "Well, I didn't get minor role and I should have. I didn't get a mitigating role." It will be very obvious from the PSR whether someone got a mitigating role or not. And if they did not, I, you know, I've always practiced in a district where we did get mitigating roles applied fairly broadly, and I have, I have a lot of concern about people who were sentenced in districts where it was not applied, but at the end of the day, they're not going to be eligible for the new mitigating role cap. And that is an easy determination to make, notwithstanding their own beliefs. I mean, probably the most complicated part is going to be, you know, going to have to write a three-page letter to people explaining why they don't qualify even though, you know, a part of it. It really was administrability, as I said to Ms. Mate, I believed, Vice Chair Mate, I believe that if there were a way to make the other part of the amendment more administrable, we would have done that. But I think TYAG's view was that we didn't want to cut off everyone because portions of it seemed not administrable, given TYAG's historical views on the drug guidelines.
Any additional questions from, yes, please.
I was hoping to follow up on Judge Restrepo's question, which I thought was a great question. Ms. Ruffo, so when is it that you would delve into the reasons for the original sentencing? Like, would you end up doing that in every case? Do you, like, sorry, sorry, they are always on me for not speaking close enough to the microphone and how I'm going to be very close. So how often would you end up delving into the reasons for the original sentencing and for any variances? Like, if you're writing a memo in every case, would that be something you would do routinely where you would say to the judge, like, "Oh, as a mathematical matter, they are eligible"? Like, it seems like there was already a variance? Or is that something you would do in rare cases? How often would that happen?
I probably can't speak for all of POAG here, but I know that I would routinely include that in a memorandum to the court when we're dealing with eligibility because we may say on the face, this person, you know, may be eligible, but the court already varied and, you know, we understand there was some discussion of role at that point or something like that. And so, at least in my district, I, we would weigh in on that, or we would provide that information or try, I mean, we're always trying to help the court as much as we can. And so we really try to look at everything.
Any more questions from this illustrious panel? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate you. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, before we move to our next panel, we'll take a brief recess. Thank you, we're in recess. Our final panel. I believe will provide us with the Criminal Law Committee's perspective on retroactivity. As always, it is an honor to have with us Judge Edmund Chang, who serves as both Chair of the CLC and a District Judge for the Northern District of Illinois. I have to give a special shout-out to Judge Chang. He was just with us in Chicago at the Commission's Annual Judges Seminar, and we appreciate that. Thank you for making us feel at home in Chicago, in the windy city, and thank you again for taking your time out of your busy schedule to help the Commission make the right decisions. We appreciate that. On a side note, happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Yesterday was 15 years ago that Judge Chang and I appeared before the Senate Judiciary Committee. I promise you, your time here with us today will not be as difficult as it was with me.
I'm going to take that to the back.
So Judge Chang, we appreciate you so very much, and remember, you have 10 minutes, because you're special.
Okay.
And we thank you so much, and you can start whenever you want.
Thank you, Chair Reeves, and thank you to all the commissioners for engaging with us today. And yeah, special thank you to Judge Reeves. It has been exactly 15 years and one day since we sat together at the Senate Judiciary Committee, and one of the Mississippi senators remarked that you were a lawyer of outstanding character and integrity, and he also predicted that you would be a credit to the state of Mississippi and to the federal bench. And that prophecy has 100% come true in your leadership of this commission. So thank you for all your service. And I always want to thank your incomparable staff. Their expertise was in high display in Chicago as they delivered an illuminating training for judges, and the choice of Chicago was an inspired one, so thank you for that. The Criminal Law Committee, as always, appreciates the opportunity to comment on important sentencing issues before this commission. Important sentencing issues, it's kind of a redundant phrase, because everything about sentencing is important, because of its impact on defendants and their families and their communities, as well as on victims and public safety. So as always, the Judicial Conference has directed the Criminal Law Committee to try to promote a guideline system that is fair, transparent, predictable, workable, and flexible. And so we view proposed guidelines and choices like retroactivity through that lens. And I'll add the standard disclaimer that, of course, my testimony is not necessarily the views of the Director of the Administrative Office, nor of the 1,000-plus judges in the entire federal judiciary. Before addressing the amendments for this cycle, if I can just sneak in a brief discussion of retroactivity more generally, because I do think it colors how then the committee has viewed the prospect of retroactivity of the cycle's amendments. I do want to highlight the committee's continued unanimous view, that generally speaking, we do believe that amendments of the guidelines should be applied prospectively only, and we think this aligns with the current Commission we think this aligns with the current Commission rules of practice and procedure, as well as the current commentary to Section 1B 1.10, which of course you are all examining. The three factors, the well-known factors of purpose of the amendment, magnitude of the change, and then difficulty in applying the amendment retroactively. We believe that, under the criterion of purpose of the amendment, that for an amendment to apply retroactively, it ought to address some issue of fundamental inequity or fundamental unfairness. And in our view, the prospect that a person will be sentenced before the guideline amendment in a different way than someone who is sentenced after does not, by itself, without more, address a fundamental inequity or unfairness. It does represent, in our view, the Commission's ongoing duty to continue to monitor the guidelines for all of those things, like fairness, transparency, and predictability. And we think that type of difference, just a before-and-after look, if that were the criterion for retroactivity on its own, then that would essentially apply to every amendment, and we think it's important, generally speaking, to have a determinate sentencing system where there is finality to sentencing. Of course, there are exceptions, and the Committee has supported in the past those amendments that did address a fundamental unfairness, including the two crack cocaine amendments, as well as the drugs minus two amendments, which we believe addressed a change in societal views about, first, that crack powder difference, and then drug sentencing generally. And so we supported those, retroactivity of those amendments, even recognizing that, of course, it would involve a massive number of motions, tens of thousands, and enormous workload for the courts and the probation officers. And that is the kind of change that is absolutely appropriate to apply retroactively. On that point of workload, I do want to point out and urge the Commission to continue to consider the impact of amendments being applied retroactively on the workload of the courts and the probation offices. And I think that's especially true in this budgetary environment, where probation offices specifically, and the judiciary more generally, is in a very tight budgetary environment. And it's not just a matter of handling those motions presented by individuals who are eligible for retroactive application. Unfortunately, it's just the reality that courts face many non-meritorious motions. And I think the recent criminal history amendments gave a real-world example of this in operation. For the status point amendment, 69.9% of the motions were filed by defendants who were not eligible at all. So not a matter of the motion being denied on 3553 grounds or some other grounds, just not eligible at all, and this is based on the data reports of the Commission. And then for zero pointers, it was even higher. It was 78.5% of the motions were filed by defendants who just were not eligible at the very threshold. And our probation officers, it's not surprising, filed north of 31,000 reports to judges based on the criminal history amendments. And so it is just an unfortunate reality that we face meritless motions when amendments are made retroactive. Turning to the four specific provisions, and starting with the drug offense amendments in particular, on the first criteria, the purpose of the amendments, it's the Committee's view that the two mitigating role provisions, the special instruction and the change in the mitigating role caps, do not address a matter of fundamental unfairness or equity that reflects a change or a sea change in societal views, and instead reflects the Commission's ongoing work in refining the guidelines over time. This amendment is, we think, akin to the earlier mitigating role amendments in this area. In 2015, the Commission modified 3B 1.1 so that there would be, in the Commission's hope, more application of mitigating role, and that was not made retroactive. Now, hopefully, the special instruction, the message will be more clearly received by courts that, for mitigating role in drug cases, you're not so much doing comparisons anymore, it's just, all right, what's the function? And if it's low level, then as the primary function, you ought to give mitigating role. And so perhaps that message will be more clearly received this time around. But that prior amendment was not made retroactive, and the same goes for when the mitigating role caps were originally instituted in 2002. That was not made retroactive either. So we don't think it crosses that threshold of addressing a fundamental inequity or unfairness. Now, on the magnitude and difficulty, the other two factors for these drug offenses, I acknowledge that there is a relatively small number, 650, I believe, inmates would be eligible for the mitigating role cap amendment, so setting aside the special instruction. And that is a relatively small number. And our concern, though, in the difficulty in applying that amendment retroactively is the prospect of the meritless motions. And it's unfortunate to have to rely on this resource burden, but it is just the reality of what is likely to happen. And as I said, the criminal history amendments really pointed out, I mean, I personally was quite surprised at the percentage of ineligible motions that the court received. I didn't even think it would be the majority of the motions, and it turns out to be well north of the majority of the motions. And so I think it's true, it is a relatively small number that would be eligible, but we do have that concern about the meritless motions. And then with regard to the special instruction, that is the amendment that the Committee is most strongly opposed to in terms of retroactivity, given that there could be 53,000 or so inmates who did not receive the mitigating role adjustment in drug cases, or did not receive the full four-level minimal role adjustment, and they could file motions on this. And so that is, I think, an enormous workload burden, and it's something of a red flag that understandably, that the Commission staff, quite understandably, is not able to estimate the number, really, that would be eligible. That's a red flag, because I think that shows that additional fact-finding would be necessary, and I think by definition, additional fact-finding would be necessary to evaluate these motions. And moving on to the circuit conflict provisions, because I see my red lights on, so I'm gonna use my New York City talk to go really quickly. The Commission's existing retroactivity criteria, again, we don't believe warrant retroactive application. The purpose of the amendment is, both of them, was to resolve circuit splits, where circuit judges reasonably disagreed on the interpretation of the text of the physical restraint and intervening arrest. And so there's not a fundamental unfairness or inequity, I think, reflected in the purpose of the amendment. In terms of the magnitude on physical restraint, here it is, I acknowledge that there is something around 1,000 defendants who could be impacted by that. And although the data retroactivity report of the Commission was not able to estimate the extent, or the magnitude of the change, it presumably would be a two-level reduction, because that would be undone. I think there would be, though, and the Committee believes that there is significant difficulty in applying this amendment retroactively. And so we would, again, have to conduct a factual inquiry to see whether the physical restraint enhancement, first, is it based on a firearm? So you'd have to go into the pre-sentence report for every one of the motions that are filed. And then also, I think more importantly, we may need to conduct an independent inquiry on whether or not there was some other basis for the physical restraint enhancement. Because in those circuits that were on the, not losing side, but the other side of the amendment, if there was a firearm pointed at a victim, then physical restraint applied, and there was no real need to go further than that. And we have a concern that we would need to, or the government would need to, if they wanted to advocate for this, investigate and re-interview the victim on, were there other physical restraints? And then courts, or even if the victim has already said that before, there could be a factual dispute, whether there were physical restraints. And a factual dispute that those judges did not need to resolve the first time around, because it applied based on the firearm itself. And the Committee was also influenced by the notion that, again, by definition, the defendants who would be applying for a reduction here, they pointed a firearm at someone and got the physical restraint increase. So it's true that if sentenced today, they would not get that plus two. But the likelihood that the 3553 factors would influence whether the sentence really would be reduced, I think many judges would consider the fact that a firearm was pointed at someone as a relevant factor in deciding not to reduce someone's sentence. And you compare that to physical restraint, including, without a firearm, could include instructing someone to go into a room and then closing the door and locking it or barricading it, and compare that to having a firearm pointed at a victim, it does not, this is not the kind of amendment we think addresses some kind of fundamental unfairness on those grounds as well. And then on intervening arrest here, again, it's not clear to, the Commission was not able to understandably figure out how many defendants would be eligible for relief here. And so I would wager, but I'm wagering, that it wouldn't be many that would be eligible, and partly because it was a circuit split, so in some circuits, there would not be a basis for relief, and then even in those circuits that were on the other side of the amendment, that there ought not be that many cases. So here again, though, the Committee is concerned about the meritless motions that would be filed, and the need to then check each of those and determine whether or not there was a traffic stop that was an intervening arrest that then kicked up the criminal history points. So those are the Committee's views on retroactivity for this cycle, and I snuck in a little bit on the general retroactivity, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chang, Chair Chang. Any questions from my colleagues?
Judge, thanks for being here, it's greatly appreciated. So how is the CGSC, how are you defining, not you, but how does the Committee define this concept of fundamental fairness?
Yeah, so we draw on part, not for textual purposes, because it's forbidden, from the legislative history of the Sentencing Reform Act and the institution of the potential retroactive application of guidelines, which said that these retroactive application ought to be, for those instances in which there has been a change, like a major change in community views about sentencing, on a particular issue, like crack powder. And so when that kind of, that we've now realized that there is a fundamental unfairness with that crack powder distinction, then that is the kind of amendment that ought to be.
So if the data suggested that judges across the country are varying significantly the higher the base offense level goes on drug cases, isn't that a sea change?
Well, I mean, I guess it would depend on the extent of what those variances are, and it would also...
Generally trending lower, across the board, on these drug cases. Is that something that the Committee has considered as a sea change, or a different perspective on these drug guidelines?
Well, if, and it would be hard to surface this, but maybe there is a way to surface this, if the judges are sentencing well below the drug guidelines range because of an attitudinal change to all drug offenses, then that's representative of the drug minus two change that happened, and where we did support retroactive application. But we would really need to figure out, I think, what is the basis for the variances? And does it really apply to all drugs? Are there variances in fentanyl cases and heroin cases? Or are they in other forms of, I mean, there's still a crack powder distinction in the statutes, and so is it based on something else? So I don't foreclose the possibility, of course, that there would be another round of drug minus two if it's supported by what I think the judiciary and the public was espousing at the time drug minus two happened. So that's my...
I guess the Committee's view is, fundamental fairness would not support the mitigated role cap adjustment.
Right, the mitigating, right.
Notwithstanding any empirical evidence suggesting that the numbers are not in equilibrium.
Yeah, well, and I have no doubt that the numbers are not equal, generally speaking, but as, I guess, two things on that. One is the fact that judges are taking into account that under 3553, which I think brought down the number of eligible defendants to the 650, because judges were already going even lower than what the reduced range would be, I think is reflective that we're taking that into account. And so there is, I say unfortunately, because I think, of course, it is our job to handle motions, and for probation officers to review motions, but that is the reality of our resource constraint.
But in terms of, again, cabting it just to the mitigated cap, it's a very straightforward analysis to whether or not somebody's eligible for this reduction. It's really a two-step process, right? To determine whether or not they're eligible, and then...
Yeah.
The frivolous motions can be disposed of very quickly.
Well, I think...
For the meritless motions.
Yeah, so here, I think, what happens, so even if districts create committees of federal defenders, AUSAs, and probation officers, which we always encourage when there's a retroactive amendment, so what are the probation officers doing? So the motion is filed, and they do have to check the pre-sentence report to determine whether or not they had the mitigating role cap in the first place. But that's not enough, they need to then check the J and C, to make, they look at the findings section to see, well, did the judge actually grant the mitigating role adjustment that the probation office proposed? And so hopefully, there's an answer there, that either there were no changes, or the changes don't affect mitigating role. And so now the probation officer knows that, okay, there was a mitigating role adjustment. But then the officer does have to calculate, okay, so what's the new range? So then they calculate the new range, and then they have to look at the sentence to see, all right, now is it below the new calculated range, because then they're still not eligible at that point. So there are multiple steps that have to be taken, and so when, unfortunately, it's multiplied in the thousands, that is the overall burden. I think if we could guarantee that there were 650, we would know that only the eligible motions would be filed. The resource burden, of course, would be completely different. And I, you know, I've ruminated about the possibility that maybe it's not the next generation of CMECF or PACS 360 system, but one would hope that at some point, we can marry the technology well enough that we can weed out the meritorious, non-meritorious motions even faster, so that we can try to tamp down the effect of the resource constraint on retroactivity decisions, because in theory, the steps that I just went through, you could have, if we had proper data collection and CMECF, maybe TOCSA, PACS 360, you could do all those steps, and even CITE, like, you know, here's where we're getting this information, and that could mitigate the resource devotion, but that may not be in the next generation or the generation after that.
Given what we have, it's still a fairly straightforward, again, cabting it to the mitigated cap, it's still a fairly straightforward calculation, there's no fact-finding the mitigated cap, it's still a fairly straightforward calculation, there's no fact finding that has to be done, and the information is in one, maybe two documents.
Yeah, I agree with all of those things.
Can I?
Yes, Commissioner Wong.
Can I follow up on fundamental fairness, but maybe in a slightly different tack from Judge Shapiro? Is it fair to conceptualize the fundamental fairness crux of the inquiry as more being about the delta between pre-amendment and post-amendment? Meaning, there, if there's a universe of people who received different, you know, sentences, the delta between those two universes is a matter of fundamental fairness, the delta, that that would be a situation which you would consider retroactivity, such that, where I'm going with this is, if the commission's rationale for passing an amendment is simply to mirror reality, so you reference situations where judges may be varying down, and the guidelines are just simply being adjusted to actually match what is already happening, so there is not that sharp delta, is a commission rationale that, based on data, we are trying to better match what is already happening on the ground, is that an indicator that this is not a fundamental fairness issue?
Right, so, I mean, I think it will depend on the context, right? So I, I think if, for crack powder, for crack powder distinction, for example, if the reason for the, that delta is that we had come to realize that some of the harms associated with crack cocaine were not being realized, and that there was this racial disparity as well, then that would address fundamental, you know, fairness and equity. And so it's, so if the delta reflects that kind of change, then I do think you could put it into that, you know, that bucket. But otherwise, just the sheer delta, I don't, I don't think that by itself would reflect fundamental unfairness or inequity. And I think the physical restraint enhancement is something of a good example here, where, let's say we had a world where the physical restraint enhancement had been plus four, okay? And so there would be a significant difference, at least in the guidelines range. But just because there is that difference, given the nature of what is being removed from that plus four of a firearm being pointed at a victim, that doesn't, I don't think in the committee's view, that would reflect a fundamental unfairness.
The absence of any delta, though, also indicate an absence of a fundamental fairness concern?
I think that's, that is hard to answer, because we would want to know, you know, what is driving judges still to sentence at around the same, you know, the same number of months and years? And so I think we'd need to actually know that, as opposed to just looking at the bare numbers themselves.
And then just one second question I had. I know when we hear about the burden, sometimes it can get a little bit abstract, and I'm just curious if you could flesh out, from a court and probation office perspective, what trade-offs? Are there trade-offs, or is it just increased workload? And what kind of trade-offs those look like?
Yeah, of course, because of human limitations and the absence of time travel, there is, every minute that we spend and the probation officers spend on evaluating a retroactive amendment motion is time taken away from writing pre-sentence reports, which means delays in sentencing. It is time taken away from supervision of those who are on supervised release. And so, of course, we need to devote, you know, time to help individuals transition back to society for their sake and their family's sake and for public safety's sake. And so everything you think of in terms of how important probation offices are to the criminal justice system and to individuals and to public safety is diminished when they spend any time on these other motions. And I just, and I don't, maybe the criminal history amendment was a one-off, but I fear it's not, right? That 69.9 and 78.5 percent of the motions, just not eligible, you know, at all. And that's squared with, you know, my personal experience of getting a motion and then, and these motions, by the way, they, of course, they take high priority, right? Because if someone should have a reduced sentence, and there's also the prospect of over-serving, we are elevating this, you know, to a priority. And so it's very hard for me to resist when I see my, you know, CMECF activity, 12:01 AM, I get an email, it has every filing that's come in the day before, and so, you know, I'm checking through that, and if I see motion to reduce sentence, I can't help but click through that to see, all right, so what are the circumstances here? And many times, it is a, it is a pro se motion, and so they're not citing to specific filings, and there's assertions. And so then I'm clicking through to the PSR and to the J and C, and so it, so that there is a time and prioritization that happens with these motions.
Should we take the demographic impact on a certain community into consideration when we're talking about fundamental fairness?
I think that happened in the crack powder.
Should we do it in this instance? Let's assume that the mitigated role cap impacted Hispanic, the Hispanic population at a rate of about 72 percent, does that matter?
Well, I think that then the question is, but, you know, why is that happening? And so if a, the concern in crack powder, I think, was that there were assumptions being made about the, that cohort of defendants and what harm, you know, would arise, that was not well-founded. And so that is, I think, of a different type of fundamental unfairness than defendants who are involved in offenses where you're at the 32, 34, 36, 38 levels. And if that, if that disparity, right, that difference, is not based on some kind of invidious discrimination or implicit or subconscious discrimination, then I, then I don't think it's reflective of fundamental, you know, unfairness. So the reason why there is that disparity, which may not even be the right word, the reason why there's that difference in the racial composition of defendants who are affected by this, I think is still really important.
Commissioner Misler.
Judge, I was going to ask you, just on the circuit conflict issue, how do you think we should weigh, I guess, kind of the numerical breakdown of the circuit divisions? Because you mentioned before, we have two different situations before us. One, we're the circuits where we'll just call it relatively evenly divided with respect to the physical restraint one, and then we have kind of a lopsided circuit conflict on intervening arrest. One of our other stakeholders, you probably didn't have the chance to hear today, I think, was describing how in the evenly divided situation, you end up with more defendants affected, because you have more cases in which the commission has essentially abrogated that circuit's understanding of the law. How does the committee think we should consider those things? Is one situation more or less lend itself more or less to retroactive application? Is it, is it worse to leave people who are in one outlier circuit without relief? Or is it the flip side, or neither?
Yeah, thanks for the question, which the committee has not deliberated on, so I won't answer for the committee. I think, as a personal matter, there, you could consider, I think, fundamental unfairness as covering a situation where, let's say you had an 11-1 circuit split, and the one actually sentenced an outsized number of the defendants who were affected by that circuit split. I think there is something to be said for the fact that you, that one circuit had, so of course, not the seventh circuit, but that one circuit had an outlier view that maybe wasn't well-supported by the text, and, you know, we all, we're humans, we make mistakes. And so if the mistake is of a kind where it wasn't a reasonable minds differ, you know, which, of course, in the physical restraint, that was, the circuits were digging deep into dictionaries there, where you had just this outlier court, and, you know, we all make mistakes, judges make mistakes, and if it's the kind where it wasn't a reasonable minds differ, I can see how that would be part of the fundamental unfairness inquiry. And especially if they sentenced, that one circuit sentenced an outsized, you know, number of the defendants affected.
Thanks, Judge. We will not note the circuit conflicts on the intervening arrests.
Yeah, please don't.
If the circuit was in the minority, it may have been one that sounds like a seven, but I can't recall 100 percent.
Yes, I do recall, so that's why I will be very careful.
Any further questions? I do have one, and you were talking about the taxing, that sort of taxes at the probation office pays with trying to figure out this stuff on mitigating role or any of the, anything retroactive application. How should we consider what our obligation is under 994G with respect to the BOP? If people who deserve mitigating role and would be getting lesser sentences and ultimately get out of the custody of BOP, how does that, how might, or should we consider that in trying to reduce the population of the Bureau of Prisons and its resources in maintaining custody over individuals who arguably should not be in their custody?
Yeah, I think there's a textual argument that 994G tells you you should consider BOP capacity. And there, I mean, I think it is obviously very much up to the commission to exercise judgment here, because that provision does refer to possibly suggesting to the executive branch that they expand capacity. So there's that aspect of 994G, you know, as well. But of course, there's, the last sentence, I believe, discusses the need to ensure that you're not setting the guideline so high that it exceeds capacity, right? So there is a balance to be struck there. But I, yeah, I acknowledge that there's a statutory basis to consider BOP, you know, capacity. And, and again, I think that this, the resource issue, I, especially with the mitigating role caps and the 650 eligible inmates, the, I think the data report said it's something like a 14.8 percent sentence reduction. You know, for someone with a 20-year sentence, that's three years, and for someone with 15 years, it's a little more than two years. That's a significant amount of time. And so I absolutely acknowledge, you know, the equity is on the other side, and at the same time, you know, there's a reality, unfortunately, that we, you know, that we reside in.
Any additional questions? Judge Chang, thank you so much for your leadership in so many ways, including serving as chair of the CLC and ensuring that we had great pizza in Chicago. So thank you so much, and...
Thank you for having me.
I say travel back home.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I believe this concludes our hearing on retroactivity for the amendments that the, that the commission has adopted this past cycle. Thank you for your attention, your comments. I know our comment period is still open on retroactivity? Nothing? Nothing, nothing, please, okay. Not on retroactivity, under priorities, okay. So thank you so much for your time and attention today. We appreciate everyone. Thank you, staff, thank you, our panelists. This adjourns our hearing. Thank you.